I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is March 16th, 2015.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? No additions to the agenda? Then we'll go to petitions and communications. George Wismerler?
Good evening. My name's George Wismerler. I am current vice president, and I've been involved in WATCH, which is the original grassroots organization that took action against the PCB dumping at the Clinton landfill. I'm here to speak briefly on three topics all related to the Chemical Waste Union proposed the Clinton landfill over the Mohammed sole-source aquifer. I'm going to read this to keep it as brief as possible. First, because of misquoting of Governor Quinn, recent progress and a general blatant and the general blatant irresponsibility of the whole idea, a lot of folks think that the effort to dump some of the most deadly toxins known to man over the drinking water source for three-quarter million central Illinois residents is over. That is simply not correct. There is a tenacious effort driven behind the scenes by the potential for huge corporate and personal profits, billions. That's with a B. There are two major efforts to stop this currently. Most recently, the twin bills sponsored by Representative Ammons and Senator Bennett. While I thoroughly appreciate their efforts Thank you. While I thoroughly appreciate their efforts, and have twice spoken to legislative committees to help support their efforts, they are two very new state legislators, and there are any number of ways the Illinois legislator can sidestep over voting on this contentious issue. Legislation like this introduced by more senior representatives has already failed once. Huge public support, especially phone calls to the legislators, could increase the odds of passage massively. Please see the handout for the phone numbers. Second, the efforts of a multi-governmental coalition. Again, I thoroughly appreciate and will do whatever I can to support their efforts. However, the Pollution Control Board has already ruled against them, and is now up to the courts. Their effort is not to bring this to a grinding halt, but to send it back to the DeWitt County Board for the sighting hearing that was illegally omitted the first time around. Which brings me directly to my second topic, the DeWitt County Board. If it comes back to them, how could they possibly vote to allow this with all the publicity and everything else it's gotten at this point? I've been on the DeWitt County Board, and after a lifetime in government work, a dozen years in activist, six years in politics, they are by far the worst governmental agency I have ever dealt with, and they have placed themselves in an impossible position. If the Board does not cite this, then because of past illegal Board activities, there is no doubt they will be sued by Clinton landfill and in all probability lose. In November, a number of the folks responsible for the original illegal sighting regained control of the Board. The Board is absurdly free with taxpayer dollars. For instance, they have already spent over $400,000 on a new animal shelter, and so far they have an inappropriate building that needs complete gutting and no plans whatsoever. DeWitt County Government has recently lost over $1 million per year in landfill fees because of improper contract language on the county's part. That's about 10 percent of their total budget. There is serious talk about closing the Clinton nuclear power plant, DeWitt County's only other major source of tax revenue, about another 15 percent. So we're talking 25 percent is up in the air there. Like everybody else, they face cuts in state funds. A similar DeWitt County Board has already defied public opinion by voting this in in the first place, and this would be a major new revenue source when they're facing this 25 percent cut. So the DeWitt County Board stopping this is far from certain. Again, public pressure in the form of letters and phone calls would make a big difference, much more than you might think. Now my last topic. Thanks to efforts of the multi-governmental coalition of which Urbana is a part-
You have one minute, Mr. Wismerler.
That's going to be tight. We have recently attained a sole-source designation for what is now the Mohammed sole-source aquifer. That represents a major public awareness tool and provide future protections, but it has no direct effect on the current landfill issue, and I'm going to skip ahead. Less well-known is that its state-level sole-source designation could have prevented this except for the timing was wrong. The Illinois EPA for this was granted long before the sole-source designation. If the sole-source designation had existed before the permit, it would have kicked in additional state safety requirements that would have almost certainly made the whole project cost prohibitive. So at this point, if it is approved, and it still may very well be approved, we will have a threat to the aquifer that was approved on a technicality and clearly does not meet the minimum safety requirements of the rather lax Illinois state regulations. Several years ago, I made a statement that this represents the extremes in government. The approval process at state level and federal level represents the worst in our government. It really does. I've been dealing with this for eight years. The coalition is a shining example, and I have said this numbers of times, of the best of government. This is a bunch of local governments getting together on a politically contentious issue where there's no direct benefit, immediate direct benefit for them, and the sole purpose is to protect the public. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you.
Also, before I have a list, I have an email list for updates on the aquifer. If anybody would like to sign it, I'll pass it around to the Board and then the people in the audience. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we already voted a couple of weeks ago, I think, to approve participating in a lawsuit.
Yeah.
So-
And that's major. I'm just I wrote a paper on speaking to boards and councils, and one of my points was you're the people on the board and the council probably know what you're going to say. You're really speaking to the media and the audience. I'm just doing kind of an update.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Tom Fiedler?
Good evening. I've talked in front of all of you before on the same issue, and read the proposed ordinance, and did want to have just a little bit of input before you voted on it. I do commend the Board and the staff for the diligence they put into putting into this ordinance. I think that there's some key points have been addressed. My understanding from discussions I've heard in the past is that the Board would like to expand video gaming in Urbana and allow for cafes. The only thing that was clear to me is that with the creation of the new G1 and G2, my thinking as things have progressed up to this point, the 12-location cap really set a G1 classification early on, even before, even though it wasn't called that. I didn't see anything on there for a G2 cap, and I think you do are dealing with two different types of businesses here. The state of Illinois, when they originally wrote this legislation, did not foresee that they would take off in the fashion they did, and it's been to the local municipalities to try to control it, because even though there's been proposed legislation to control and cap the cafes from a variety of different things, from the amount of gaming revenue to just a straight cap across a number of locations across the board, it's been hard to define, and I think you've done a good job of defining it because it's based off of the revenues generated from gaming. Again, though, going back through, I would like, I would think that the community here would want a G2 cap, separate from the G1 cap, because as the intent of the legislation was, was to help small businesses that had existing liquor licenses, whether they be a bar or restaurant.
I would like to clarify that we're not talking about a cap. We're talking about individual approval by the city council.
Okay.
And it has been, it's been restricted by location. We have maps that show-
By distance.
Yeah, by distance. So we're using a different method than the original method.
Okay. So would that open all gaming licenses?
Yeah, it's for G1s and G2s.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any-
G2s are more restricted than G1s by location, but we don't have a cap anymore. We tried a cap, and there's such a demand for these things that we're going to look at them individually one by one.
Okay. That's why I didn't read that. So that was nice to know that. I do know, though, that on certain circumstances, that the restrictions of gaming licenses within certain limitations of other existing gaming licenses might create a problem. I can understand it on the G2 side, that you do not want the cafes or parlors, as it was like to be called, to be stacked or located tightly together, but I do know of some people that are having the G1, what would be a G1 license at this point, that are looking at locations that are within the boundaries of that five or 250-foot restriction. So I would hope that you could, the Board could look on a case-by-case basis and grant outside of that ordinance. I would just hate to see you tie your hands too strictly with that, even though it does protect existing businesses. So it's a bit of a double-edged sword, and that's what I wanted to bring up.
Really, the only limitations are between G2s and G1s. There's no, except for the zoning. We're establishing where these are, can be located, and there's a state law, too.
Okay, I thought the G1s and the G2s cannot be within, but if somebody had an existing G1 and wanted to open a G2, even though they were the same entity, they couldn't, they still would have that restriction.
They'd have the restrictions of a G2.
Correct. And I'll tell you exactly where it is. On North Corningham, where Tin Roof is now operating and existing, the adjacent building is almost basically a duplex where the adult bookstore was, which has been vacant for a number of years. He'd like to expand into that, but is concerned to meeting the requirements of a G1 license, so if he would open as a G2, he could then take over that whole building space and improve all that space. But again, he's only taking revenues from himself if the restriction is to not to have conflicts between licensees. So that might be a place where you would want to look as an, at an exception. So if there's, if that is allowed, I think then on a case-by-case basis, then you can address it from that standpoint. So that's all I really wanted to put in. Like I said, I appreciate all the efforts you had in commending and supporting local business in this community and stuff, because it is a pertinent, important revenue stream for them, and as these cafes are wanting to come in town and open up and everything, I hope that the local businesses would have the first opportunity to the local people, because the economic impact goes well beyond what is generated at that location. I mean, they're hiring local people, the money gets used for gas, vehicles, hiring of people and stuff like that. I know I've doubled my staff and doubled my fleet of vehicles since I've gotten into this business. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. A question for you, Eric Jacobson.
It's a point of information, and I guess it relates directly to your testimony, but I guess I think I want to ask the mayor because, because it really is about what's embedded for our processes. So do I understand that if, in the situation that was described here, if there was an existing G1, person wanted to put a G2 right next door, same owner, that would not be permitted by this ordinance, but could be permitted by a request for zoning variance? Is that, would that be correct?
You've kind of gotten beyond what I can answer at this point, so why don't you ask that question when we have the discussion?
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finally, Bishop King James Underwood does not wish to speak, but is still concerned about the Doctor Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Is there anyone else who wants to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we will move on. Unfinished business, I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole.
Yes, that was me. We met two weeks ago on March 23rd, imported several items to the council with recommendation for approval, and some of them with changes, and some of them has been changed since then. So first, we have ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapters 3 and 3.7, establishing Class G video gambling liquor licenses and fees for the committee. I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts, and I think that Mike Madigan has something he wants to ask.
I do. So even though we're discussing gaming halls and the regulation of gaming in the city of Urbana, the way that these ordinances are drafted, they are inextricably linked with liquor licenses, and I've been advised by the city's legal counsel that state law precludes me from participating in the discussion of the vote, so I shall recuse myself from committee of the whole ordinances under A and B.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Do we have a staff person who wants to answer Eric Jacobson's question?
What was the question that you had, Eric?
So the question that I have is, well, here's the hypothetical question, as I understand the public participant said, if, Tom said, if the, if there's an owner of a G1 license, and this owner wishes to augment his enterprise by adding, you know, let's say right next door, or maybe in another section of the same building, a G2 enterprise, let's say very close but separate, perhaps separate entrances and so forth. That would be, as I understand it, prohibited by this ordinance. The person couldn't do that by right, but would the person, but would there be a pathway to it by an appeal for a zoning variance? Would that, would that be a proper, would that be, you know, a possible pathway?
If I'm correct, that'd be a use variance, which isn't permissible?
A use variance, so it would not be permissible, so there'd be no pathway to that at all?
Illinois state law does not per, does not allow use variances, if I'm correct.
I think that it would be a distance variance, but it would have to comply with variance criteria, so they would have to prove that the situation was so unique and the hardship so great and all the criteria were met. But since it just has to do not with the use in which zone, but that particular distance in the zoning ordinance, then in theory it could be varied, but they would need to prove that case, so.
Okay.
But I would, Christopher did look at that hypothetical location, or that real location that you mentioned.
Yes.
And did you want to talk about that?
Well, in the, in regards to, in regards to a second location at Tin Roof?
Yeah.
It what, there was discussion about, or research done into the several of the, several of the applicants who were in the process of establishing these businesses for a, if there were a second location at at Tin Roof, the distance that we measured was between an establishment called Ruby's and Tin Roof Tavern, not the, not the second, not a second G2 license near the Tin Roof property. We had heard about that, but we had not heard anyone, no one had approached us about it or had come forward with the, any, anything in the application process to mention that, but there, it would obviously be very, be very close within the 250-foot required distance. The, in the memo that we were going to discuss tonight was mainly regarding some of the existing, some of the existing applicants, as well as the method of measurement traditionally done by parcel to parcel, instead doing by business frontage to business frontage. So.
Now, I guess I'm thinking that the issues, the problematic issues, it seems to me, are really arising from proximities of G1s to G2s. I think there's probably a consensus that we don't want a whole bunch of G2s crowded together. So I guess when we get a little farther into this, to think about this a little bit, I guess I should have thought about it more beforehand, but I'm wondering if we should consider to just eliminate the G1/G2 distances and only keep G2/G2 distances.
Bill?
I guess I have a procedural question. I know some people are considering eliminating the special use from the second ordinance that we're going to be considering on zoning, and Eric's already brought up distances aren't in the liquor ordinance. Is it possible to consider these in omnibus fashion, discuss them both at once and vote on them both at once?
Sure.
Can I?
Yes, they can be discussed together.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Separate vote regarding each ordinance unless you take them in omnibus fashion, which doesn't make sense because you're going to have the same number of votes.
Well, it's just a matter of amending one with condition on the other, because it, I mean, the first one, if I want this amendment that would require a public hearing for the G2 license, I only want it if the special use doesn't pass, and it's, and it becomes a use by perm, by permission, by right. So is, how do you make one conditional on the other?
Well, I think probably the easiest way is to have the discussion on the zoning ordinance first, even though it appears second on the agenda, and the issue of special use, and depending on what happens, obviously, a lot of the discussion generally, you know, in terms of policy, you will have had, so you don't need to repeat that when you consider the liquor ordinance, which is item A, F1A on the agenda, kind of take him reverse, and then if you feel it's appropriate, make your amendment. You can also make the amendment in the other one, too.
Yeah, I think that we should just take them in order, and, you know, there is a cost of delaying things, too. We have, we've seen a lot of delay for businesses that wanted to invest, so I don't know if we're going to get a perfect ordinance, but we could get a decent ordinance, and if we run into problems, we can address the problems. But we do have a motion on the floor for ordinance number 2015-01-004, and people can certainly ask questions with regard to the next ordinance, but I think we should keep them in the order that we have on the agenda.
Can I make one statement about 004? The single piece of paper that I handed out that has a line circled in ink, in your packet, this is the red line version, it indicates what was circled was to be stricken. That was, I must, W in other words, about the middle of the page, that was supposed to be underlined to indicate inclusion. That's why I handed it.
Okay, so it should be back in there?
Yeah, it should be back, and in fact, in the clean version, it is in there. I just didn't want anyone to be confused.
Okay. Diane?
I can't remember if anyone seconded the motion.
Yes, it was made by Bill Brown, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any other discussion? Bill?
So I'll go ahead and offer this amendment, then. At the end, after the table, in the actual liquor ordinance, there's a brief description. It's not in our ordinance because it's not being changed, but there's just a description that said that the council has the right to hold public hearings as necessary for liquor licenses. So I have a statement I just wanted to add in that same section, so it'd be just prior to Section 4. And that would say, "A public hearing before the city council shall be required before issuing a G2 license, notice of which shall be mailed to surrounding property owners and residents within 500 feet of the establishment, at least 15 days, but no more than 30 days before the public hearing." And so my rationale with that would be, that would allow us to make it a use by right instead of a special use. The special use notification process would still be in the play, but it would apply to the liquor license instead of the special use. That way, neighboring property owners would get the notice, because if somebody's going to locate a G2 somewhere, everybody within 500 feet is going to be affected. That means they won't be able to locate a G2 within 500 feet. So those, those property owners should get notice, and also the five, the people within 500 feet, who live within 500 feet, might want to comment on whether or not they want the G2 there. So I think that would be a good change. So I guess we need a second.
I'll provide that.
Okay, Diane?
I'll support this amendment. I support regulating G1s and G2s through the liquor license procedure. I support creating the second, the G2 category, so we know exactly what we're voting on, and I also support not going the special use permit route, so I'm very supportive of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have, go ahead.
Yeah, I still have a concern about having the location of the G2s as they appear in application to be locations which work within the community and which are within the neighborhoods, and I think that there should be a way for the city council to consider that very specifically as they're applied for and granted, just as we have reviewed specifically and have had input on not only liquor licenses, but other kinds of licensing in the city. There are some locations which the, that the, I think, bear, bear more consideration than others as to the effect that the location will have on the immediate neighborhood, and I think that there should be a public way of addressing and listening to that. So this is maybe the second-best way of doing it, and I appreciate Bill Brown's interest in having at least a public hearing before the city council on that, to allow anybody to come forward and comment about whether that should be allowed. I don't really have a problem with the G2/G1 liquor license classifications. I'm really more concerned about where these are located in the city and how they affect the neighborhoods immediately surrounding them, and letting those people have a voice in that conversation.
Well, since the amendment was made by the same people that made the original motion, is it safe to assume that that was a friendly amendment?
Yes.
It's okay with me. Are you comfortable with yourself?
Okay, so we have a motion that's been amended with a friendly amendment to include a hearing. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? We're voting on the amended motion. Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next?
Next, oh, you're, you're doing the report. Go ahead.
Next, we have ordinance number 2015-03-029, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois, revising Article 2, Article 5, and Article 7 to establish definitions, use provisions, and special use permissions for gaming hall. This is planned commission case number 2250-T-15, sent from council, yes. So for the committee, I move approval.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. We also, yeah, we have a suggested change. Did you want to talk about that?
I could just briefly mention the adjustments and the, or the considerations in the memorandum, as well as the ordinance. Just really quickly, the conversations over the last two meetings of the committee and the council, there were some concern about, we took a closer look at the potential applicants who were in the process of putting up an establishment, as well as the implications of what was adopted during the committee, and found that, for one, that there were several applicants in various stages of establishing, putting up their establishment that would be in conflict with each other with the language as, with the proposed language, and that also the traditional, without any specification of the method of measurement, that the traditional method of parcel line to parcel line would have been more restrictive than the, significantly more restrictive than the intention of, of the ordinance language. And so in this amendment, we brought forth information- And so, in this amendment, we brought forth information that would allow a discussion for how to, how to best move forward with the ordinance amendment with regards to, with the knowledge in mind of the potential conflicts that exist under the proposed language, as well as a specification of recommending business frontage to business frontage, as opposed to parcel line to parcel line. A lot of these businesses in the state, as well as just businesses in general in the B3 and B4 zones, are leasing space in a strip mall or a multi-unit facility, as opposed to just an individual space. And so, their actual distance is, the actual distance away from a G2 applicant would be, would usually be not as, not as much as if it were parcel line to parcel line. So, if you're looking at a very large parcel, it would make that, in actuality, a much larger distance than perhaps the council intended. So, we included language to mention that. Also, what was proposed with several of these potential conflicts was a changing from 500 feet between the G2 and G1 licenses to 250 feet, and making that with business frontage as opposed to, as opposed to parcel line to parcel line. Also, there was a slight modification to the definition of gaming hall to be consistent with the liquor license ordinance as well. There was still kept a 500-foot distance between schools, daycare facilities, places of worship as well, and any other G2 license. We brought up a map just to show where some of these potential conflicts are occurring. You'll see that they're highlighted with a star, as well as kind of a blown-up area down here. Actually, since we can take a closer look at it, you'll see, if I'm correct, that little green circle on Cunningham is Tin Roof, if I'm not mistaken. So, if a establishment were, just to the right, to the corner right of that is where the establishment named Ruby's, which applied for a liquor license, would be located. Under the current language, there's obviously a conflict there. If you look on the next page, there is a chart that shows between business frontages as opposed to parcel lines that might allow that, Ruby's to exist along with the Tin Roof. If the Tin Roof, or someone wanted to establish a G2 license within that proximity, it would most likely be in, I mean, just looking at the blown-up area, it would most likely be in conflict with Ruby's, which is, if Ruby's had already established a G2 license at that point. You'll see that the other areas are between an establishment called Lacy's Place and with Po'Boi's. If you did that between frontages and you adopted the 250-foot distance between business frontages, that would allow that establishment to open up for business. Emma's, which had most of their licensing and permitting done last year, except for their gaming license. Their gaming license is pending with the state, but their liquor license, as you might be aware, was granted in December, would be allowed to be established, actually, under both sets of rules, their closest proximity is to the American Legion. And then, the proximity between the establishment known as Dottie's and Hot Spot would be unaffected. There was also, I'll just leave it as a business group that inquired about a possible location at 202 West University. That would put them rather close to the proposed Lacy's establishment. But if the council decided to adopt the language of 250 feet, it would allow them to possibly move into that location. So, with that said, we just wanted to discuss, just briefly mentioned, the revised definition, as well as possibly adjusting the terms of the special use permit to be 500 feet from schools, places of worship, daycare centers, and other G2 licenses, and 250 feet from G1 licenses. And also, business frontage to business frontage.
We've got a couple people with questions. Aaron Ammons?
So, I guess for myself, as well as, I know there's got to be somebody else out there who doesn't know the difference between frontages and parcels.
Sure.
So, I'll just put myself out there and say, if you could explain what the difference is from that standpoint. And also, we had a discussion a couple weeks ago about the addition of parks. If you could discuss why parks are not a part of this, because they seem to be a part of other things with legal issues and things like that.
Okay. Well, first off, parcel line means property line. So, the overall edge of the property to the other edge of the property. And so, you know, the property for some of these, some of these, some of these areas in the B3 or B4 is rather large. So, and then, frontage would basically mean from, in a retail strip, from the one edge to the other edge of the frontage of the business, and where their, you know, where their front door is, where their, the windows, or where, you know, whatever space that they occupy in that building at the front is what would constitute their frontage. So, to answer...
Bill Brown?
He asked about parks.
Yeah, yeah, also. In regards to parks, parks weren't taken into consideration in the same way that in the state law, the only specification was for schools and for places of worship. We added daycare centers because of their similarity to schools in that regard. It's possible that if you were to throw, if, we would have to do an analysis, but if you were to include parks, it would perhaps include a more prohibitive ordinance than maybe the council would intend. I would have to look at that on a map, but I can pull up a map from a, you know, probably the first time that the council looked at this, that showed the, you know, what a 500-foot proximity from schools and daycare centers and churches, which is quite a few areas around the city. If you were to include parks with that, that would push out into the restricted space quite a bit more than already exists. If you look at the map that we provided with the 500-foot buffer amongst existing G1 licenses and the one potential G2 license, you'll see that that, for just B3 and B4, that already creates a limited amount of parcels that are available to establish a business on. Those parcels being, properties being the one in light blue throughout the map. So, it's, I guess, just something worth taking into consideration regarding the current restrictions of nature, and if you added parks into that distance requirement.
Okay, Libby, and then Bill Brown?
On the question of parks, I know there was a lot of different discussion about this ordinance. I don't know that that rose to something that was directed, but I would say that parks are not considered sensitive land uses in the same fashion that we ask for separation of liquor stores, for example, from schools and daycare centers, or medical cannabis, or these other types of uses where we really want a separation from churches, schools, daycare centers. Sometimes you have separations for noisy types of activities from hospitals and nursing homes, but I'm not sure that that's a separation that we could really see good examples that would justify that.
The reason why I posed that question was, one, I just saw the different things that were listed that would seem to be, especially daycare, sensitive to children and things like that, because you don't know what sort of, I don't know, what sort of activity or what mindset a person may be in after leaving one of these gambling institutions. But I also know that from state law, or maybe it's just local ordinance, that the, whenever there's a drug violation or criminal activity near, if it's schools, churches, and parks are also added to that, and it exacerbates a sentencing or a charge. And so, that's why I was asking if there was something similar in this regard to this ordinance also. So, I figured if the state found that to be, if parks to be sensitive enough in that situation, they would be sensitive enough in this situation.
Okay, Bill Brown?
Yeah, on the daycare, well, one comment on parks. I guess our billboard ordinance does specify distance from CRE zoning, so that would be an example of one that would include parks. On the daycare centers, I think it's defined as daycare facilities that the buffer requirement is, but it looks like the map included daycares at home. So, our zoning makes a distinction between home daycares and daycare facilities. So, I'm wondering which is what we're voting on, the map or the text?
It says state language, right? That's from the state statute, so it's how they define it, not how we define it.
Well, the state statute goes with just schools and churches. The daycare facilities, I believe, would be in specification to how our zoning ordinance includes it. I would just have to double-check on the, our stated definition of...
Can you verify that the map was included daycare, home daycares? It looks like it did. Looks like it included everything. It was in neighborhoods and everything.
Daycare facility does not include the daycare home. That's a different type of use.
Okay, so the map, it would be different than what we're looking at on the map. I don't see a lot, actually, where the daycare probably would make a whole lot of difference, but it would be different than what we have on the map, I guess.
Okay, so we have ordinance that went, okay, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, all right. So, okay, so I would, okay, so based, I've got two things, but based on that conversation, I'd like to include then home daycare centers in the ordinance as one of the buffer zone required lists. So, I'd like to make that motion.
Charlie?
Actually, we probably should decide which is the main motion first, whether we want to substitute the new simplified version that staff has put forward in place of the actual ordinance that's been moved by Bill, and then we should amend that one.
Okay, we have a motion for the existing ordinance, Brown and Smythe. And if you want to substitute the revised ordinance, you can amend that motion.
Yes, I would make a motion, then, to substitute the staff simplified version, which removes the special use and just incorporates the distance language, which also changes the distance language to 250 and 500, and make some other cleanups, as indicated in the memo. So, I would move to substitute that motion in place of the one that's on the floor.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, to substitute the revised ordinance for the one that's on the floor. Dennis?
Okay, so I've got a question about the distancing and how that can be used. Say we have Emma's, which is a, going to be given a G2 license, right? I mean, that's what they're going to be applying for, right? All right, now, say that, I'm going to just use the hypothetical, say that a firm that wants to establish a G2 license decides to rent out the boutique Goodwill store that's on the corner of the same shopping mall. But they decide to evade the, or through creative thinking, they decide to make their main entrance in the back of the building, which now becomes farther than 250 feet from the facade entrance that's facing the parking lot where Emma's is. And there's no reason why they couldn't possibly make the rear entrance to their facility the main entrance, because we have such kinds of entrances in other businesses here in town. So, how do we avoid getting two buildings that are within 250 feet of each other, two G2 licenses granted, just because they've decided to use the back door rather than the front door as the basis for entry to the building? Have we thought about that?
I think Libby wants to answer that question.
Good, please do. I'm very interested in finding out.
So, we use business frontage for signage distances, so that's a definition that would, we would rely on. So, it's the leasehold, not the location of the door, because, you know, you're right, you could change the location. So, it's the area of the lease. And in this section of the zoning ordinance, business frontage is a lineal frontage of a foot, I'm sorry, the lineal footage of a lot, fronting the public right of way, owned or rented by a person, business or enterprise, and intended for business usage. So, that's the definition we would rely on. So, it's a leasehold in the strip center. So, I think in your example, I'm trying to remember how big that shopping center is, but it probably is too close to go to Goodwill and Emma's, because...
I'm sure it would be.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it would be.
And changing the entrance would not change that.
But there is another public street, you know, at the back of the building, you know, of course, there is like a service area there, but I mean, one could say, one could put up an argument that there is a gravel drive, or whatever it's called, I can't remember, Maple Street? No, the entire building would be property to property, right?
No, it's the building lease space.
Lease space, lease space to lease space.
That's, the lot line is the original measurement, and we're trying to change it to the building, not the front door, but the building.
The building.
So, it's what you rent.
Okay, well, I still have a concern about it, but all right. I mean, I can imagine, you know, something similar happening, perhaps, at, you know, the bullet and whatever the...
Well, when they submit their application, they would have to tell us where the entrance is, wouldn't they?
Yes, they would.
Isn't that correct, Libby?
Yeah, we'll have a site plan. We'll make a determination. You know, we have to make these determinations, these types of determinations, all the time, and we have a process, and we're consistent. And if people disagree with our interpretations, we go to the zoning board of appeals for clarification. We make a new interpretation, and we change the zoning ordinance, but we feel we have good definitions, and that this was, as Christopher mentioned, this would create a better sense of the separation than using the lot lines.
All right. And I would just argue that, as the memos, the original gaming hall memo from staff was, to quote, I don't know if it's Libby, if you wrote this up, or Christopher, you did, "But addressing gaming halls through the zoning ordinance or the city code," I just want to read this, "In discussing the regulation of establishments with video gaming as a principal use, the council examined how much regulation should occur through the zoning ordinance versus the licensing procedures of the city code. The Urbana zoning ordinance, as described in Section I-1, is designed to implement the policies of the city in regards to the built environment and land use. With gaming halls, the zoning ordinance would address the location and the placement of a proposed establishment." And this is, I think, what is important. "The amendment proposal to a special use permit requirement is the best tool of the zoning ordinance that can protect nearby residents and promote congruent uses within neighborhoods." And I think that, I'm not sure where within staff the idea came about that we should drop the special use permit. And even though we're talking about using distances as one way of establishing locations of gaming halls in a community, it doesn't address the appropriateness of where gaming halls are being, are applying for. It doesn't, you know, it's not about, it shouldn't be only about the distance to some other G1 or G2 license holder. It should also protect nearby residents and promote congruent uses within the neighborhood. And there are fragile neighborhoods in Urbana where a gaming hall would not be of great use. But I don't see how there's going to be a way of making that distinction if we adopt a ordinance here in the city council without requiring a special use permit for that review.
Well, the, when that memo was drafted, and it was stated that the special use permit was the best tool, that was done with the intention, or with the understanding that, that being, that was the intention of the council, to use the best tool available to regulate the placement and the location of, I mean, obviously, that's the prerogative of the council to decide that. The idea of dropping the special, I mean, the idea of dropping the special use permit is not, if I'm correct, is not what's being considered yet. That was only drafted up as a, because it was informed to staff that it might be a possibility, that it might be something under consideration. That was just something I passed out tonight in the event that council decided to take that measure.
And who directed you to do that?
I did. Yeah, we talked about, the council was concerned about locations, and so we thought special use permit. And then, when we did all the study of what does the map look like and what would be the distances, we realized that we had already... we realized that we had already got it under control, and the city council will look at these individually. So if you don't like where something is going to be, there's going to be city council discussion, but before that, you've just added a public hearing. So I think we have a system that will address your concerns without having to do another, go through the plan commission. I think we can do it the way we do all liquor licenses, and that's worked pretty well. And all these businesses, you know, we didn't know what they were going to turn out to be like, but the police department has had no problems with them. And they're all making quite a bit of money, so that's why there's a demand for more licenses. At some point, this is going to get the market saturated, but we're not there yet, so. This is letting the, the market decide, but the city council has a decision for each one of these on whether you want that location.
Well, you know, this may be, this may be one another way, I mean, that's why I supported, you know, the, Bill Brown's amendment to the liquor license. But it seems like to me, because the location is all about zoning and where things can be placed in the city, that the zoning ordinance should be stronger. If you look at the concerns that came up in the planning commission, they were offering, they were, they were recommending buffers of 1,000 feet, not 500 feet, or 250. They were, they were being very much more conscious and concerned about the placement of these in the community, and really perhaps what the, what I've heard from the community is just the proliferation that's possible from this. So I don't see the grounds, which the city council is creating, to avoid, you know, extreme proliferation, given the choice locations that might exist if there's only 500 or 250 feet allowed between locations of these licenses. So I think that the city is going for one thing, which is the money, but the community has got concerns, which is really public safety. And I think that the city council is really not looking at that.
Diane?
Well, I think the city council is looking at that on several levels. The top level is we've restricted their, the G2 locations to being in B3, B4, and B4A. So there, if you look at the maps, I mean, that's, that for one is a major restriction. Secondly, we have added the public hearing notice, so people will have an opportunity, and other businesses will have an opportunity to weigh in. Number three, we're going to be reviewing these things on an individual basis, just like we do a liquor license. Number four, we created a specific license for the gaming halls, which is a G2 liquor license, which allows us to identify each time we vote on these things. And taken together, I think that provides a rather extraordinary level of review. And, and if it doesn't work, we can fix it, but we'll see, we'll see how this turns out. But I do think we've, we've offered far more restrictions, for example, than our neighboring city, and I think it's a balance, at least it's a reasonable balance, a good place to start, and we'll see how it works.
Charlie?
Yeah, to reiterate what Diana said, I'm looking for simplification here, because we're doing two things. We have a zoning and we have a liquor license type situation. We don't normally have that. We either have zoning or we have a liquor license. This is a combination deal, so rather than put, rather than put complicated language in both of them, trying to simplify one and move everything to, move everything that ultimately comes to council, just directly to council. So we're making it simpler for those who are applying for this, and it brings it to the, to the city council a little bit faster. So, you know, we all supported Bill's amendment to, to, to give us a little bit of heads up and give the public some heads up on, on the zoning, so we don't need it in both places here. So I think it's more appropriate to look at it from the liquor license point of view in the same fashion that we vote on every liquor license. So that, that's why I'm, that's why I'm supporting the substitute, simpler zoning ordinance at this time.
Bill?
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with going without the special use, because we have the public hearing as part of the liquor license. I appreciate all the effort and information and discussion that the plan commission did to give us, first of all, a strong signal that they don't want any gaming halls, and that's consistent with what I've heard from the community mostly, actually completely from the community. But also to give us some guidance with the buffer zones, and I think that those are all good, good pieces of information they provided. I did want to make a few comments on just how, how much we should think about controlling these. I know Rand Tool has said they aren't going to have any more, all they, all they had to do with the mayor said, "I'm not going to have any more." They made it easy. Champagne has reached their limit on the Class A licenses. I don't know if they're going to expand that. I guess if these, if a gambling hall can come across as a restaurant to Champagne, they might still be able to get a license. But last I heard, they've reached their limit. So it's not surprising that five or six or seven, however many have applied, have applied to Urbana, because there's not many options left. So when you think about how many should we have, if you look at how, what the area of our retail, and actually even more restricted than that, now that we've restricted to three zones, the B3, B4, and B4E, compare that area to the area where Champagne permits them, for example. Champagne only has five of these, only has five gambling halls. They have a lot of machines, because they have a lot of retail, they have a lot of buyers. So, yeah, they have 160, 180, whatever you said, machines. But last I counted, they only have five that we would have considered gambling halls. So if we allow six or seven and cram them into an area, a third or a fourth the size of what Champagne has to deal with, it's going to feel pretty dense, I think. It's going to feel like, maybe not Las Vegas, but maybe, you know, out on the edges of Las Vegas or something. I think that would be too many, so. As far as revenue goes, I understand the concerns, but I think you also have to think about, long-term, some of that money would have been spent in Urbana anyway. When it's spent in restaurants, we still make, what, 3%, 3.5% by the time you get our home world tax and our food and beverage tax and our other, you know, the regular 1%. So instead of 5% of that money, some of it, we would have made 3%, 3.5% on anyway. So I don't think you can look at $186,000 doubling, basically trying to double our gambling revenue in a year and say, "Oh, that's going to be new money." I think some of it would have come our way anyway, if it would have been spent in restaurants. As far as, okay, so I may come back to revenue. I thought I had something else to say on that, but the state also has a program where a very small percentage of the actual license fees, not their revenue, not their, their percent on take, a small percentage of their license fees goes to support agencies to basically deal with problem gambling. And they actually, it goes to, on our Department of Human Services, and they actually did a pretty smart thing. They realized that it wasn't much money. It's like half a million dollars to a million for the whole state. So they, they're actually teaching classes, so they're, they, I got this from Community Elements, that they also have concerns with the amount of gambling that's being expanded. But they're offering a problem and compulsive gambling counselor five-day core training. So they're basically training the trainers. So we need to get people from Champagne County to go be trained by DHS, because that's the most effective use of that money, because they know that a half a million dollars isn't going to go very far to deal with the social problems that are going to come from the gambling. It's not the, it's not that the police get called to these gambling casino, gambling halls. It's, it's that they affect the family, it's that kind of eating away at your family budget, and eventually that turns into either bankruptcy or, or some kind of other social problems. So they know that money's not going to go far, so they're basically shoving that off onto the rest of us. But at least they're doing the training, so I hope we can encourage people to go to that training. So other than that, I guess I'm okay with the ordinances, the one that's been proposed. I would support, I guess, adding the daycare home, and I'd even consider the parks if people wanted to talk about that some more. But I think we do need to be careful about, when we start to pass the liquor licenses, really be careful about how many of these we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the substitute ordinance by Smythe, seconded by Marlin, and we have a question for Karen Adams.
Yes, just from a procedural standpoint, I thought that the original motion had to be voted down. I didn't know you could just substitute a motion like that. Maybe I'm wrong.
We're going to vote to substitute that one instead of the original one, so you don't have to vote one down. It's like making an amendment.
It's a giant amendment, you said? Oh, okay.
Okay, anyone else? Would the clerk please call the?
We just, no, we're, we still have, we have to vote the substitution, and then we have to look at amendments.
Do the substitute one? Well, we have to substitute by roll call, though, don't we?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor of the substitute motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Myself.
Okay, that carries. Would the clerk please?
No, 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 people want to make amendments here.
Oh.
Right, all right, so, all right, so we're going in a direction I'm not in favor of, but let's try to make it better. So I'd like to add to the ordinance that, according to the map, according to the tax, we're going to, I wish to add that daycare centers in the home are also to be protected areas that require the buffers that we're requiring. That's my motion. To add home daycare centers as well as the, the centers that are specified by the text.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Want to have a show of hands? Who's in favor of adding daycare, home daycare? Does this mean that if somebody opened up a home daycare, then a business would be forced out of business? Or you'd have to rewrite this thing, right?
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, okay.
Is another, another term that I should, should have pointed out that was included as well. Pre-existing has been added to, for clarification in that regard, so.
Okay, so does, is this already included, or are we adding it?
I believe it's already.
It's on, yeah.
Add daycare home is the wording that we have in the zoning ordinance. And actually, that, that was, those were included in our map.
Okay, so.
They're already on the map, so when you look at the map.
They're already on the map, and so you just want to spell it out, is that correct?
To confirm it, to confirm it.
All right.
Looking for clarity.
So all those in favor of that motion, please, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there anything else? Okay, we have an, we have
Parks?
A new motion that's been approved. So would the clerk please call the roll? It's been amended to.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Is this vote for the amendment?
This is for the whole thing as amended, with the daycare in it? And whatever else we do?
I'll still say no.
What?
Mr. Smythe?
Aye.
Yes.
Do I get to vote on this? The mayor doesn't vote on this one? Okay, well, that motion carries. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number 20, oh, no, this is Bill Brown giving his report. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Bill, please.
Okay, ordinance number 2015-03-030, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2014-15 for the JAG grant. For the committee, I so, I move approval.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries. Bill?
And finally, we have a resolution number 2015-03-013, our resolution to authorize execution of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Clinton landfill permit application to accept polychlorinated by Fennels, agreement to authorize the hiring of legal and technical consultants to participate in any local sighting hearing conducted by Dewitt County Board to consider authorizing the operation of a chemical waste unit in Dewitt County. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Brown, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees? I don't think we have any. Reports of officers? I would like to report that the committee that was studying the 911 funding has issued their report, and they're talking about having a statewide monthly fee of 87 cents. So I think we have to get to work to try to get that raised to $1.50. Ideally, I think it should be based on the individual jurisdiction. But they have a very complicated report, and I think they've done some really good work. They've included all devices, which is one of the things that we were pushing for. And they've also pushed for consolidation. And they did point out that this county has probably the best 911 system in the state. I think we're kind of well-known, and I think our representative Ralph Caldwell did a really good job on the many weeks and months that this committee has met. But we still have more work to do on that one. Okay, then we have the Public Arts Program, the annual report.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me again. I'm here to talk about the Public Arts Program, and again, my name is Pauline, and this is my contact information if you ever needed. So the Public Arts Program was established in 2008 to foster a city where all residents, emerging artists, established artists, and non-artists alike can engage in the arts and where artists can thrive and feel valued. And we are advised by a nine-member volunteer commission. Patricia Salmon is the chair, and Virginia Waller, vice chair, Barbara Headland, John Morrison, Robin Douglas, Eric Jacobson, Ilona Makovsky, and Jason Patterson, and Kevin Hamilton, which is not there, my apologies. But these people represent various fields of the arts, and they really offer some really good insights. Some of them are musicians, artists, galleries, educators, and whatnot. This is a list of our current initiatives. Probably the largest is the Urbana Arts Grant Program, which every year funds art projects that happen in Urbana. The Urbana Sculpture Project is also a program that we're really known for, murals on glass. We have art workshops and performances at the farmers market. We have Arts in the Schools, which is another grand program but focused on arts education. Art Now is our TV show on UP TV. It features interviews with local artists. And Arts of the Corridor is our exhibition program at the city building. So the city building lobby usually features works by local artists. Starting this year, we have arts programming at the New Boneyard Park, and also we have the Royal Arts and Architectural District. This is our program budget from this fiscal year. As you can see, arts grants takes up the majority of that budget, and Sculpture Project is second with $11,000. Art of the Market, $2,000. Arts of the Schools is $3,000. The Boneyard Arts Programming, this year $2,700, but we expect it to be much lower next year. And marketing and events take up about $3,900. I would say that with that amount of money, we have considerable impact. The Urban Arts Grant Program funded 25 projects this year. The Sculpture Project, we installed six sculptures and purchased one sculpture. That's the one in front of the iron post by Sean Warren. Art of the Market, we hired 10 artists and artist teams, so performing and visual. We featured 12 artists on Art Now, which has no cost at all, and except for staff time by UP TV. think illustrates why the arts is so important to us, and not just to empower our residents, but also to educate our children, and also for its economic impact. This is one of the recipients of the 2014 Grants Program, the Midwest Monday. You might have heard of it. They're pretty huge. They had performances, workshops, and a marketplace where local craftsmen can sell their products. And these events happen at the Landmark Hotel, Black Rock Pizza, the Urbana Free Library, a local church, and other venues. There's so much collaboration happening here. They attracted a hundred twenty-seven attendees, including from Champaign-Urbana, Chicago, Bloomington, but also from other states, including California and even Canada. And they received only three thousand seven hundred fifty from us, but they managed to raise money online and through in-kind donations, and their total festival budget is twenty Just a quick announcement before I wrap up. This Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, there is an event at the new park by Boneyard. I've sent everyone an email about that, but I hope you can make it. There will be performances, art-making stations, food trucks, face painting, and buskers. Speeches start at 12:30, and after that, at 1:00 PM, there will be a tour led by artist Jack Mackey and engineering tech Beth Ringke. So please let me know if you'd like to make it, but if you don't RSVP, you're so welcome to join. And after this event, at 3:00 PM, there will be a royal dedication event at the Norton and Bennett Drugstore at Main and Ray's. So I hope you can make it to that one, too. Thank you for your support for the arts, and if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions for Pauline? Very nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brandon?
I'm going to go briefly over the economic development report that was emailed out to you, and a paper copy was put at, at your seats here. The city has now issued two requests for proposals, one for North Crane Alley, which is a site that includes the current bunnies, two city parking lots, the former Jolly Roger, and a private parking lot north of Black Dog. That was just issued on March 25th. We've had a good response from our local media. And of course, the 200 Vine request for proposals for the block north of City Hall was issued about a month ago. Those proposals are going to be due on May 8th, and the proposals for North Crane Alley are due June 26th. Strawberry Fields is, has had its building permit issued, so work is underway, as it was reported in the News Gazette recently. The owner, Mohamed Alhiti, has decided to do some more substantial renovations of the space because he is, he's now the owner of the property and the business, which was a great outcome for, for our downtown. So we hope to see them open soon. A permit has been issued for a new Korean barbecue restaurant that's going in over at Gregory Place. I don't know for a fact if it's, if it's grill at table in the same manner that Maceda Grill is in downtown, but I would suspect so. That one has moved very quickly. We first heard about it, and, and the business owners moved very, very fast to bring that restaurant to East Campus. As Pauline mentioned, the Boneyard Celebration is on April 11th. I'd encourage you all to, to attend that. And another feature of that festival is, is that you can go into the Boneyard and take a look at all the new banners that were, they were actually hung this morning. You can go see, the call was called Urbana Raises Your Art. One of the nice things about both the Urbana banners calls and the murals on glass calls is that they're 2D submittals, so they're very accessible to a wide variety of artists. Even three-dimensional artists can submit an image of their work. So for this call, we have, we're featuring two artists, Beth Darling and Paula Camille, I may be pronouncing her name wrong. So they both have an assortment of works that'll be displayed in groupings in the area, but also there are about a dozen or more local elementary school students who've also submitted. So you have a great deal of variety on these banners all around the Boneyard, and as I mentioned, they're up today, and you can enjoy them at the event on Saturday. This, just last week, on April 2nd, we conducted our 2015 Realtor Bus Tour. We had about twenty-five people attend, and this is a two-hour tour of the city of Urbana with Realtors, and we go through all the different business districts and communities, talk about the parks, talk about the schools, and talk in general about what a great place Urbana is to live, and encourage Realtors to promote Urbana to their customers. The Market at the Square is gearing up. We've had over a hundred vendor and community group applications for the season that's going to begin on May 2nd, which really isn't very far away. And there'll be a new initiative at the Market this year called Read at the Market, and that'll be in partnership with Urbana Free Library. We're continuing to expand programming at the Market and by bringing on additional partners. You've probably read in the newspaper, but it's worth reiterating, that the University of Illinois Board of Trustees approved the creation of a new public-private-engineering-based medical school to be located in Champagne, Urbana. We're very optimistic and hopeful that we can work with the university to cite that facility in Urbana and try to encourage more dynamic entrepreneurship in our community associated with this new school. Any questions?
Charlie?
Yeah, what kind of feedback did you get from the real estate agents?
For the, for the-
For the tour?
For the tour, I had several hearty thanks and enthusiastic responses as, as folks were getting off the bus. Natalie Kenny Marquez, our marketing coordinator, did a lot of work to organize that. We had quite a few speakers. We had John Dimon, the president of the school board, and Tim Bartlett of the Park District, Bill Gray from the Public Works Department, several others, and lunch was, or breakfast, as it was, was provided as well by Piotto. So it was a good, good experience overall. The weather wasn't the best, but.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? Diane?
I just had a question for Brandon. Do you anticipate the city taking a proactive approach to development of the university? Have an accord, corridor between the new medical school and the medical facilities? I mean, it seems like we shouldn't just sit back and wait for some, maybe for some things to happen. What, what do you anticipate the city could do to foster private investment in that corridor?
In that corridor?
Yeah.
We, I guess, we primarily have to start with outreach to property owners. I mean, clearly, the development of a, of a, pretty much a full city block there at Goodwin is, is the university property, and it'll be the university's decision whether or not that is redeveloped. We are in very frequent communication with Howard Wakeland, who owns a large number of properties in that area as well, and has long been anticipating investment of the once, once referred to as North Research Park. He'd assembled properties long ago, and, you know, we make every opportunity to help Mr. Wakeland and his efforts. But in terms of, you know, the other things we do, the enterprise zone will be applicable in that area if we're successful in that application, and if any private party or the university wishes to partner with the city in a request for proposal or any other marketing effort, we're certainly able to assist with that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Finally, few business. We are very happy to have Lori Pearson, who's sitting in the audience. So she has the endurance needed for this job to be the community development planning manager, and you have all received her credentials, so I'd like her to be the new planning manager. Charlie?
Move approval?
Second. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.